All right, we're good.
Okay. We pledge you the use. I pledge to the life of the United States of America and to our government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of Jesus Christ.
Very helpful, Father. Be this a season as we do the business for the city and the good and welfare of the community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
This will be item C, approval of the agenda for November 8th, 2021.
Make the motion approved, minute.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item D, citizens' comments. So at this point, we'll allow citizens to comment on any of the agenda matters. And each citizen is allowed three minutes. They must state their first and last name, where they reside, and they have to leave it to comments only, no questions and no answers from the bench. At this point, if anybody wants to comment, feel free.
Is this where we can wonder?
There isn't an order. Just come on up.
Okay.
Anybody at any time.
Okay. My name is Dana Rose, and my husband and I, Dennis, live at One Langton, on Goddard, right off of Goddard Road. And we were sent a letter that we were kind of, we were just wondering about what type of restaurant, what type of a bar, is it going to be more of a bar, is it going to be more of a restaurant, those kinds of wonderings, also wondering about what the noise level, there were going to be any bans? I mean, we live right across the street from where this is happening, and we had no idea until we received this letter that anything like that, we're okay with a restaurant, but we have grandkids and things like that, and like I said, we're right there, and we're just wondering what the noise level is going to be. Those are our questions, or, excuse me, comments.
Thank you very much. Anybody else at this time?
I do have one question.
You can come up, but as a question, it would be more...
Am I allowed to represent my mother?
Absolutely, yeah, come on in. State your name, where you reside, and of course, where your mother resides.
My name's Christina Barnes. I reside at 8522 Westbrookview Street, Wichita, Kansas. My mother resides at 32 Shannon Doe at Goddard, Kansas. We've been residents here for 36 years. I do have some concerns and things that we're curious about as far as this new special amendment, special use ordinance. Number one is the hours. Number two, noise control from the parking lot. Number three, safety of the senior residents that live across the street. Four, congregating in the parking lot after hours. Five, the property values, will they decline? The special use definition on the Goddard website is use of a structure which is not permitted outright within a zoning district because of characteristics that might have an adverse effect upon property, and this is classified as a special use. Seven, extra patrols if anything starts happening like increase in DUIs, speeding. Eight, underage drinking, how it's going to be controlled. Nine, the effect on the Goddard comprehensive master plan. Number 10, the cutoff time for serving alcohol. Number 11, the traffic that's going to be driven down Goddard Road. And then 12, the noise that will be going on, because currently noise starts at 5:00 AM with the gym, when I stay at my parents' house, I can hear this. So 5:00 AM till closing. So what are those hours for the residents that will be able to sleep? Is it from 5:00 to midnight where they get five hours of sleep? So those are some concerns that we have with this.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? If you're a Gen 9, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I...
Yeah, I'll talk for you.
Okay, not a problem.
Anybody else? Okay. Just chair at this time and close citizens' comments.
I'd like to close citizens' comments.
Thank you very much. Have we approved all the minutes? So this is to approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes from October 11th, 2021, and we have the site plan for the new veterinary clinic.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 11th meeting.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So this is item F, Board of Zoning Appeals. So item F1, special use application for restaurant and bar. So the property owner at 401 East Industrial Road has submitted an application for a special use for about 2,000 square feet of the interior of the building. The application is for a restaurant and bar at the location where the previous tenant was supplement HQ. Subdivision regulations require that special uses be treated in the same manner as a rezoning application, which would require both approval from the planning commission and approval from the city council. City code and state law both have different provisions for handling liquor sales and consumption. These have to be taken into account as well. Letters are sent out to every property owner within 200 feet of the property, within city limits, and 1,000 feet outside city limits. Subdivision regulations in respect to land use supply as well as city and state code related to liquor and cereal malt beverages. So these are just things to be taken into account. So the planning commission today is reviewing the special use application of 2,000 square feet for a restaurant bar located at 401 East Industrial Street. Code definitions, so according to the city code, which mirrors a lot of state code, definitions of alcoholic liquor or alcoholic beverage means alcohol, spirits, wine, beer, and every liquid or solid, patented or not containing alcohol, spirits, wine, or beer, and capable of being consumed as a beverage by a human being, but shall not include any cereal malt beverage. And they define cereal malt beverage below, in quotes, as less beer as 3.2% alcohol by weight, so alcohol per volume. So types of businesses that the state defines, this would be a drinking establishment. I have that in orange, so you can review it. It means premises which may be open to the general public, which where alcoholic liquor by the individual drink is sold. And so that's kind of a definition here for what kind of a classification of a business for selling it in terms of a club, is it used in terms of retail or limited retail, and in this particular case, it would be considered a drinking establishment. So restriction on location of state, which is also reflected in city code, says you cannot sell within 200 feet of a church, a school, a nursing home, a library, or hospital. Said distance to be measured from the nearest property line of such church, school, nursing home, library, or hospital to nearest portion of the building occupied by the premise. So no person shall sell, oh, excuse me, at retail any alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages in any areas owned higher than commercial, and no license or permit shall be issued for the sale of alcoholic liquor, cereal malt beverages in the building, or does not meet the zoning ordinance requirements of the city or conflicts of other city laws, including building and health codes. So something to be taken into account. So we ran a quick 200-foot buffer around the property to see if it was in conflict with any of the surrounding properties. All of them are being residential on this side. This is an industrial zone over here, the school's over here, there's no school over here, and as you can see, for the most part, there is nothing within 200 feet that would violate that state law. Restriction on sale. So no person shall sell or offer for sale any cereal malt beverage or alcoholic liquor except that's provided in the chapter. Shall be considered sale the cereal malt beverage or alcoholic liquor which charge is made for mixing and serving. Basically, what these are saying is that you cannot sell liquor in the city limits without approval. That has to go before city council for a liquor license. So that's just something to take into account. No person shall allow consumption of cereal malt beverages and alcohol violation of this chapter on any property owned, leased, or otherwise under his or her control. This is saying that if you don't have approval from planning commission to have that special use, if it's required, if it's in a use that's considered acceptable already, then you have to go before the city council for the liquor license, and then after which everything else is considered copesthetic. The property in which violation of the chapter takes place is declaration of common nuisance and as such, subject to abatement. So, for example, if the property owner at 401 East Industrial got approval from planning commission and the city council for the special use, and then acquired a liquor license for 401 East Industrial, and then proceeded to sell liquor at 402 East Industrial, that would be considered a violation. It has to apply to the property in question, and it can't be redistributed or resold. You can't sell your liquor license. It has, it applies to the property that you've applied for. You can't sell to an individual down the street who then applied, you know, uses that liquor license to sell liquor or distribute liquor or sell by each individual portion at a different location. It applies to the location in question. Mine is on premises. So shall be unlawful for any person under the age of 21 years to remain on any premise where the sale of alcoholic liquor is licensed for on-premise consumption, or whether a temporary permit holder is serving alcoholic liquor. Shall be unlawful for the operated person in charge or license of any premise with license for on-premise consumption of alcoholic liquor or a temporary permit holder who is serving alcoholic liquor to permit any person under the age of 21 years to remain on the premise. This section shall not apply to the person under the age of 21, accompanied by his or her parent or guardian, or if the license or permit premise derives not more than 30% of its gross receipts in each calendar year from the sale of alcoholic liquor for on-premise consumption. So for example, we have a couple other places that sell liquor. Pizza Hut for one was selling liquor for, I think they were selling wine at one point, and then Ginger's, the Asian restaurant off North Frontage Road, they also sell, currently are a liquor, hold a liquor license. But since they have less than 30% of their gross receipts from the sale of alcohol, it's mostly considered a restaurant more than a bar, and they're allowed to have minors in there. So there's, that's kind of the provision that they have according to the state. Hours of operation, there shall be no serving mix or consumption of alcoholic liquor or CMB on the licensed premises between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM on any day. Concealed carry of weapons by patrons of licensed premises. The Personal Family Protection Act, KSA 75-7C01, commonly known as the concealed carry law, allows the carrying of concealed or unconcealed firearm in any building unless such building has consciously, I'm sorry, conspicuously posted prohibitive signage in accordance with the Attorney General Rules and Regulations, and a drinking establishment may elect to prohibit concealed or unconcealed carry on its premise. If it does so, then it must post at the public entrance premises signs of a design approved by the Kansas Attorney General indicating that the concealed or unconcealed carried firearms is prohibited. So basically, by and large, you're allowed in Kansas to have a concealed or unconcealed firearm pretty much in any building unless that building explicitly says you cannot carry inside that building, and restaurants or bars are allowed to do that. So they're allowed to prohibit, to keep, conceal, un-, un-concealed or concealed firearms in their, in their business. Restriction on employees. All persons who are serving alcoholic beverages must be at least 18 years old. However, any server who is under the age of 21 must be supervised by a person who has at least 21 years. All persons who are mixing or dispensing alcoholic beverages must be at least 21 years old. No person connected with dispensing, mixing, or serving of alcohol can have a conviction or a felony of any crime involving immorals charge in Kansas and any other state or United States at any time. Immoral charges defined in subsection K of KAR 14-21-1. So it lists a bunch of felonies on there, including solicitation of prostitute, drug paraphernalia, aggravated assault, this general things are listed. If anybody is found to have violated any of those laws, you're not allowed to hire them. If they do, then the state potentially could come in and restrict that liquor license and say you can no longer sell or dispense at this place since you've hired somebody who has a previous felony. So that's something to just take into account. Final approval. If the planning commission approves a special use application, it will need to go before the city council for final approval. So special uses are kind of unique because they're treated like a rezoning, whereas conditional use permits are not. So a conditional use permit goes through some of the same application. You have to publish it in the city newspaper, send out the letters and everything else, but the ultimate decision is given to the planning commission, where special uses are treated like a rezoning. So it goes through publication, city newspaper, we send out letters, it's considered before planning commission, and then the final consideration is given to the city council. So special use is treated like a rezoning in that way. So if the planning commission approves it, it'll go before the city council for final approval. After final approval by the city council, the applicant will need to apply for a liquor license from the state. The city clerk will process the liquor license application and collect the necessary fees required by state law. It would not be the first drinking establishment. Ginger's off the North Frontage Road is classified as a drinking establishment, and Pizza Hut at one time was considered a drinking establishment as used to serve wine. So I don't know if Pizza Hut serves wine anymore, but at one point they did, and they were considered a drinking establishment. There is a small publication cost per state law. It is recommended that the planning commission approve the special use application for the restaurant and bar at the location of 401 East Industrial Street. The city did run a surplus and leakage survey, which is an economic survey to determine, is there a demand for drinking establishments in the city? If that demand is not met, what happens is it's called leakage. Those individuals will leave the city and go spend those sales tax dollars in a different city where that drinking establishment is. If we have a surplus, that means that we've overprovided for what the citizens are looking for, and we're collecting sales taxes from outside the city, which means that our trade area, people from Wichita would be coming into Goddard to buy and consume, which is a plus. It turns out that we have a leakage of about $453,000 citizens of Goddard are spending in Wichita at drinking establishments, since there are no drinking establishments in Goddard. So that's just a consideration. At this point, I will allow Mr. Jordan Hungles, the property owner, or his representative to speak on behalf. You would.
All right. Well, thank you for... For letting me come in this evening. I wrote a lot of your questions down. I'm happy to, I don't remember all of them though, but if I miss something, by all means, let me know, and I'll definitely get an answer for you. So, yeah, as Mike has stated, our goal would be to bring in a bar and grill to answer one of the questions, leaning much more towards the grill side as opposed to the bar side. So it would be actually just over 2,000 square feet. It'd be more like 2,200 square feet total. About 1,800 of that would be actual, what you'd consider restaurant space, and about 400 to 500 of that would be basically the kitchen and storage, you know, et cetera. We based roughly off the square footage numbers, we could be able to fit anywhere between 100 to 120 patrons. Now, I don't know that we would ever be, that would be at max capacity. That would be, you know, basically as many people as we could fit in there, which I don't think we'll ever have in regards to, part of that square footage is going to be taken up with, you know, probably a pool table or darts or something, some type of an effect. So there's something to do in there as well. As far as hours, I know that was something that, that had been brought up. So I, we're definitely not trying to run a club. During weeknights, it'll be 10 o'clock close. During weekends, it'll be a 12:30 close. I mean, we don't plan on being open super late. That's not, we're not trying to, the 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, or 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM crowd is not who we're looking to serve. I mean, it just isn't. Our general manager, who I plan on bringing in, has been in the industry for 15 years, and it's just, that's not a crowd that you want in your establishment. So we figure with a 12:30 close, so basically midnight will be your last call, 12:30, everybody be out the door. That way, just keeping all parties involved, you know, my staff, you know, potential city staff as far as police and things like that, just keeps everybody on a lot more, I guess, even keel, I guess would be the term. So as far as the hours, that's, that's the, the, the plan there. The other thing is, is, you know, with us doing this, we're trying to present something that the whole city, you know, I've, I've done a lot of things in the city already. You know, my whole goal is the rising tide lifts all ships. Already spoke with and been in contact with Strew Locker, Doug Strew of Strew Locker, and we're basically going to be sourcing all of our meat through them. You know, obviously, they're one of the oldest businesses in town at this point. So to be able to partner up with them, to be able to, to bring more of their, you know, be able to give more of their, you know, wares back to the people, that's obviously a goal as well. Just in regards to business alone, you know, obviously, I work closely with the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the frustrations is, is that, you know, hey, is there anywhere where we can just go and sit down and have, you know, you know, have a, have a business meeting? Well, we have Pizza Hut, which I know that, you know, Lions Club is in there, and I, but as far as, there's not really anything else outside of, I get, there is Ginger Asian, but even Ginger Asian, it, it's mostly a takeout, you know, establishment for the most part. So trying to find something where we can, you know, have a, a location where the community can actually sit down and, you know, enjoy a meal, enjoy a beverage, you know, and be able to, to spend some time, kind of have a, a place to call their own, a Goddard to call their own, that is. That's really our goal. Is there any questions with any of that?
You had said that the manager you're bringing in has been in this for 15 years?
Yes.
Same, same type of situation?
Similar situations. Currently, she, she runs three different bars down on Lake of the Ozarks. That is where, that's where she's been the last several years, and that's where she's, that's a much different crowd than what we would be serving here. And so that's one of the reasons that she's, she's helped me basically put together this whole entire plan. Hey, it's got to be shut down, you know, last call at midnight. That way, everybody's out of there by 12:30. She said that in and of itself will take care of a vast majority of a lot of your trouble that you run into with, with a bar like that. Was there one that I?
Noise bands.
Okay, so I, we don't plan on having like regular bands or anything like that. We, I'm not saying that we won't have a band, but that said, if we did, the band will be done at 11:00. So it'd be from like 9:00 to 11:00, and then that way, to, to, once again, to help with the noise.
I have a question. If you're planning on 100 to 120 people, where are you going to park them on?
Right. So, and like I said, that, the reason I say that is because that would be the max of passage. I don't plan on having that many people in there.
But if it happens?
Now, if that does happen, what we would, we plan on extending our parking lot, okay? So to create more space there. And then as far as overflow goes, overflow would go up, I'm trying, would go up industrial then.
And that's okay with the other companies up Industrial Road?
I, I don't even know if I can do it, so I have not established all those answers.
Do you think you ought to talk to them?
Excuse me. At this point, we're going to go ahead and let the developer move forward and talk to the planning commission. If, if you want to address any questions to Mr. Jordan Hungles, I agree.
If you have a band that's going to be inside, correct?
Say that again.
If you have a band that's going to be inside the building?
Correct, unless we had spoken to the city and had worked something out so that we could be outside. But the goal would be to have them inside.
How many parking spots do you have?
So right now, with our current space that we have, we have about 60 stalls altogether. And now we're going to have, obviously, we think we can add 12 more, based on the extension that we're going to make. So if, now obviously, if 100 people all drove a single vehicle, they wouldn't all fit. But obviously, the goal, I say the goal, the thought would be is that some of those would be riding together.
More of a sports bar type thing?
Yeah, that, that would be the idea. You know, more of a sports bar and grill, you know, with the, with the district stadium right there. So, you know, after game night, somebody, you know, you could get a meal beforehand, you could get a meal after, or, you know, you'd get something after if you wanted to, but that's definitely more of the goal.
More comments, questions? I think that pretty well answers our questions for you.
Okay.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Excellent.
So I have a question concerning special use.
Yes.
Is that a carryforward thing, or is that simply for Mr. Hungles and his future if he were to sell? Is it still there? Is it still viable?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. It's a legal question. I've been running into some interesting situations as it pertains to conditional use. I mean, as you saw with the county, they, there are special provisions that I guess the lawyers are determining you can add to conditional use permits. That's a fair question, and to be honest, I don't know. Special uses are generally treated like conditional uses. They run with the property. So Mr. Or, Mr. Hungles is to sell it, it would stay with the property. Now, if the lawyer says something else, like I said, I have to disqualify, disqualify myself from any legal considerations. I'm not qualified to make that determination. But generally, special uses and conditional uses, they run with the property. So if something were to arise where the lawyer said it's discontinued for some reason, then, yeah, then I would have to, I can't speak on that. So, but generally, they stay with the property.
I'm really my only concern. I mean, I'd like to see, you know, Mr. Hungles is a very responsible. We don't know what the next person necessarily be. I would like to, I would be interested in knowing if we could put a stipulation on that, I guess, if, if that's possible before, I don't know if anybody else cares, but...
You want to find out if there's a legal?
Yes. I mean, if, if it were to sell, would it could, could it be dissolved? Is that, is that something we can put in there as a, like, as, as we saw with the county?
I would say, since this is a public meeting, you could approve it contingent upon final legal determination, and then take that before council, because city council's got to make the ultimate decision. So you could say that planning commission approves a special use contingent upon final legal consideration if a special use application will run in perpetuity with the property. That would be sort of the motion you would make. Either that, or you would, you know, simply deny it at this point. A tabling would be the same in this in the sense of the denial. But if you were concerned about it running, then that would be something you would present, you, it'd be written up in the agenda as a presented to city council that you didn't want to see it go longer than 10 years, or if you wanted to see it have a set limit, then that would be something that would be drafted and set before city council to say this is what they, this is their concerns, this is what they were okay with, this is what they're not okay with, and that's what would you...
I think on your question, as, as long as the present number hasn't refined it, but if...
Right, that's kind of what I would...
Yeah, I mean, but, but I understand what you're saying, the stipulation. I don't know if anyone else is, well, is concerned or feels the same way. I'm, I was just curious.
It's something that's greatly needed in this realm.
I agree with that 100%, but I'm, I'm just concerned with the...
We could best would be taking it like a bar and grill to like more of a nightclub.
Right. And there's nothing that's going to prevent that, that special use.
Uh, the liquor license would.
Ask you, I guess.
The liquor license classifies what it is. So if it was to go from a drinking establishment to like a club, for example, they would have to reapply for a liquor license and take that before city council's a different type of liquor license, which would have to then be considered as a, as a land use as well. If a nightclub would be acceptable in an industrial district, that would be a completely different type of land use classification.
So if it wasn't more heavily bar from, from bar grill?
Yeah, that would be, I mean, at that point, if it, a full-on drinking establishment, it really is just going to be a drinking establishment at that point.
You're still going to have to apply for a liquor license because that's not transferable, but...
Right. In terms of it being...
If they have to come back before us and ask for another special use, if it's...
Only if terms of it was a, only if it was a land use really changed. So if he changed it from a drinking, so from a restaurant and bar to a club, like a nightclub or something, that's a different, that's a different land use. In terms of a different classification for the liquor license, it would have to go before city council, and the state would have to make a determination that you're no longer a drinking establishment, you're a club.
Right.
And that's, that would have to be, that'd be taken up by city council and the state.
Another question I have is the facade on the building, does it have to change?
No, because this is just a, this is just a special use. He's not building a new building. He's just basically changing one tenant out for another tenant.
That huge setup, I like your motion. I'll make a motion to approve the special use application for the restaurant and bar at the location of 401 East Industrial.
I'll second it.
Discussion, do you want to add a contingency plan to that?
Basically, what you're saying is if I add a contingency and it doesn't happen, city council can still approve it?
Yes.
Without even...
City council has ultimate authority to approve a special use.
I guess I would like to, I would like to know the answer to that. So I would put it, I would like to put a conditional on there that says...
You want to propose an alternative motion to approve with contingency upon legal review for city council?
Yes.
There would have to be a second for that as well.
I'll second it.
Okay.
On favor? Aye. Aye.
So the motion is approved. The special use application for the restaurant bar at the location of 401 East Industrial Street contingent upon final legal review if the special use will run in perpetuity. Thank you very much. Mr. Hungles, at this point, if you want, you can stay the rest of the planning mission or... Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Old business, there is none. Old business, there is none. New business, this is going to be item H1, this is accessory to a principal structure, accessory to principal structure, excuse me, 219 North Main Street. So a quick background, the property owner at 219 North Main Street is asking for a reclassification of his building from an accessory use to a principal use. The building was approved to be constructed as an accessory building, which is defined in a city of Goddard code under specific language and comes with certain restrictions. The property owner would like to request the building's classification be changed from accessory to principal, which would allow him to use it for income generating purposes. An accessory building is designed to serve the property owner's personal needs and do not allow for leasing the building, it would need to have a certificate of occupancy changed through MABCD. By converting it to a principal building, it can be leased or used for other flexible uses similar to any other commercial building. So the planning commission is considering allowing the alternative occupancy classification of a building from accessory to principal. The accessory building are classified as, is subordinate to and serves as a principal str, uh, serves a principal structural use, meaning that there has to be a principal structure already there, the accessory comes secondary and it serves the principal, is subordinate in purpose to the principal structural use served, so, meaning that it can't be a completely different use, you can't have textile manufacturing as a principal structure and the accessory be boat storage, it's completely, that'd be a completely separate use, has to be subordinate to the principal use. Uh, contributes to the comfort, convenience or necessity of occupants' business or industry in the principal structure or use served and is located on the same zoning lot as the principal structure you serve. And that's regarding the beginning of the accessory structural use prior to the principal structure, that'd be section 61, which is not relevant, this portion right here. The principal structure is a structure in which a principal use of the lot in which the structure is located is conducted. Principal use, the main use of land or structure as, or structure as distinguished from the subordinate or accessory, and there are new subdivision guidelines for conversion from one to another, so that's why it's being brought before the planning commission. So analysis and discussions with the property owner, uh, there was talks about the business and professional offices or service businesses, which would be considered allowable permitted uses. Um, if there was any other thing besides any of these 11 uses, it would have to be considered as a conditional use, so an auction house, automobile service station sale, uh, commercial recreational activities and amusement centers indoor only, um, storage of goods and equipment not always related to a principal use of the premise. So any of these would have to have a conditional use applied, and they would have to go back before the planning commission for that. Any of these would be considered acceptable in the current central business district zoning classification. Um, like I said, the ones in orange are the ones discussed with the property owner, so they would be considered acceptable. So this is an analysis, this comes from MABCD, um, we have access to their online permit portal, so we can piggyback off the system. This is the current classification that MABCD, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, has for the property owner in question for 219. This classification over here I pulled from another commercial business over, uh, the Orshuns Farm and Home, and as you can see, the classification for 219 is accessory or accessory structure, one for Orshun is a business or business, and that's commercial. Both of these are considered a classification of commercial, but there's a clear distinction between accessory structure and a commercial business, and so that's kind of what the certificate of occupancy, once you've built something, MABCD, the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, is saying, it's, can have this type of occupancy, it can either be boat and RV storage, or a house, or a chicken coop, or whatever it is, and that's what the classification is. So the planning commission is considering allowing that to be changed, and then the property owner would have to go back before MABCD and go through that process to change it, the certificate of occupancy from accessory to commercial. This is a survey that was required on the property owners to take into account what the location of the businesses in relation to other lots and the street and the alley, um, and this is an aerial footage with, um, lot dimensions, just to give a perspective of what's been requested. As discussed, there was a joint session of the planning commission and the city council, and at one point, they decided that collectively, they would want to see the design guidelines changed, um, for how metal buildings are, have their faces changed, and so in this particular case, you have an example here, you have example, you know, D and E, uh, E is considered not significantly exposed to the public, D is predominantly covering it, uh, an example A, and B, B is significantly exposed to the public, even though A is covered just about a little less than 50% or, or close to 50%, and C is completely exposed to the public on two sides, abiding in the street, and this is a corner lot. So in this particular case, the property in question here is considered significantly exposed above the principal structure, we would ask that the east side of it be faced according to that new design guidelines that was generally approved by the planning commission and the city council collectively. Other than that, financially, there is none, as I said, the subdivision regulations don't have a clear path to how a conversion can be done from accessory to principal, that's why, for transparency's sake, we brought it before planning commission for thoughts, comments, and critiques. Legally, it's approved as to form, uh, it is recommended that the planning commission approve the new classification of the identified building as a principal structure, with the east side of the building being wrapped according to the new design guidelines discussed during that joint session. And we do have, uh, Mr. Joey Rod, representing himself, I believe, if, would you like to tell up and speak on the matter?
Sure. Um, you did, it looks like, all my homework for me.
Thanks.
So, uh, he, I mean, he, he basically put it out exactly like it's supposed to be put out, this was built as a storage facility, and now I want to switch it to where I can rent it for, I don't know if it'd be gymnastics, I don't know if it'd be offices, I just have had a lot of, um, a lot of requests for space in Goddard, um, especially something that we can give them 800 or 1,200 square foot, or possibly even more. Um, so, the offices that we built out of the church over there, um, are basically full and they're still in need for more space, um, and so, that is, the motion is to try and get it just switched from, you know, it's something that I can actually rent. I didn't realize when I built it that I couldn't rent it. I thought I was just getting a building up, and I didn't realize there was different classifications, you know, I, I thought once you build a structure, you can, you can kind of use it for what you'd like, but it's all a new learning process for me, so, um, yep, trying to switch it from accessory to a primary use, so it can be rented, so we could add some more businesses downtown. So, thank you for your consideration.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are you going to do for parking?
Um, on-street parking, Main Street is required in, in the business district to provide parking, um, as far as I know, we're, we're trying to build three more buildings on, on the lots on Main Street, uh, and so we're probably going to be working with you guys on parking for some other structures as well. Um, I think we need more parking on Main Street, but, um, as it is, they would, they would park on Main Street, and I have a sidewalk down the side of my building, a four-foot wide sidewalk that leads right back to that building, um, so they would just use the same parking that I've used for, I don't know, the last 10 years there, so...
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you, uh, you were talking about piecing that, uh, red allow spaces?
At, at this point, I'm not sure, right now, it's just one big, you know, building, if somebody wants the whole thing, then possibly they would just take the whole building, it kind of just depends on once, um, once I get it switched. Right now, I'm kind of like Jordan, I don't even know if I can do this, and I still have to go before MABCD to see if it's even something that they will allow me to be occupied, um, with the way it's built, I don't know.
Right, and I mean, one concern I would think is, you know, meeting ADA guidelines for, I don't know, how the inside of structures, they'll, you know, if it's got anything, I mean, those...
It would be all up to, all up to normal standards, yeah, normal ADA standards and, um, all that, so...
Changing the facade is, is not a big issue for you?
Um, you know, if, if that's something that, if that's a hoop I have to jump through, I guess my question would be, is it just the part that's above, you know, is it just the part that's above my chiropractic office? Because my chiropractic office is, um, stucco, and that's probably 10 or 12 feet high, and the sides on my building back there are 14 foot high with, you know, the peak above it, um, well, it's, at, at this point, I'm having to jump through it, whatever, however many hoops I have to jump through, so, um, yeah, well, whatever we need to do, I think it'll look goofy, uh, it's, I guess my question would be that it's okay if I keep it as a storage unit and keep, and keep, you know, trucks and trailers or stuff for my business in there, and it doesn't have to be faceted, then it can stay the way it is, and I could just keep it that way the next 10 years and not rent it out, but if I'm going to rent it, even though I'm not changing anything on the structure, I would have to facade the front of it, it seems like, uh, oh, it, it, it seems like, um, it, it's a hoop that I'm willing to jump through, but, um, I, of course, I'd, I'd rather not have to facade it if I didn't need to, um...
Well, I, I think that, probably so that you will kind of see where we're coming from, uh, we have struggled with metal buildings in, anywhere on the highway and in town.
Sure.
And that's where this joint meeting between us and the city council came about, and not specifically talking about your building, but anything downtown or on the highway is going to have to come up to better standards than a...
The tough thing that, I think that we can all agree on is that industrial-looking buildings are coming into style, so if you go to any type facilities, like the container ships and the industrial metal-type facades, people are putting on all kinds of buildings, you know, in different areas and different cities, so, um, that is one of the, like, challenges with that, and I don't have any problem stuck on it, but I think if I stuck with the east side and not the other two, you know, the other sides, it's getting a little goofier than it does just being all one congruent building, but that's up to you guys' s, you know, perception as well, I think if I stuck on one side and then, you know, and I'm not trying to ask you guys to make me stuck with the whole damn building, but, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm going to always make sure my buildings are well-lit and up to standards and look nice, um, and are well-maintained, so, it's kind of whatever I have to do to, to make it happen. If I was adding a bunch of windows or adding other doors or doing other construction, and I was get, trying to get approval for that kind of stro, stuff, you know, I could see some, some facade requests or something, but with me not changing anything on the outside of the building, or the way it is, and just switching to use, um, but, again, I'm at, I'm at the mercy of whatever hoops I have to jump through at this point to move forward with renting the building, and it's, you know, it's 2400...
I agree with you that the, the trend is, is going to a, a different style. I think that our concern here is if you drive down Kellogg from city limits, city limit, there's 14 metal buildings, and other cities look down on Goddard because of that. Uh, there are other cities that, they, they require a brick-and-mortar building.
Right.
And, so I think that this meeting with the city council said, you know, we, we need to stop where we're at.
Right, and I don't know how to figure out what percentage it is based off of you guys' drawing, um, I, I'd have to go back there with the tape measure and get square footages to be able to tell you if it's actually 50% that sticks up above the building, um, or not, I don't...
The way, the way the code is written is, is just significantly exposed, there's not a set percentage, really.
Okay.
It's just to the casual observer, objectively, is it considered significantly exposed above the principal building, in which case, from ground level to sopit, it would have to be wrapped with something completely different.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be stucco, it could be masonry or wood or anything of that nature, it's just going to be metal, according to what planning commission and the city council made that determination during that joint session.
Sure.
That's basically it, and, and that would mean that not just the exposed part, but everything from the ground up.
Absolutely, and I really wouldn't want to do that, right, to just do the part, you know, from, from that portion of, you know, like, I would put it all the way up, but again, I think if, if somebody drives in that parking lot or comes down the street and sees, you know, incongruencies, I think it could look strange anyways, but, and I don't know how you guys handle the whole, like, if there's 14 metal buildings on Main Street leading in, then how do you get all of those changed, to change the look of your whole town, or, and you, do you make every person that ever wants to build a building in town, build the whole thing out of brick or stucco or some material, within the, the price of building goes up, not to where it's unrealistic, because clearly, that could still happen, but, um, it sure makes it harder to, um, I don't know, make things happen, so, but, again, I'm, I'm here to do whatever needs to be done, so...
We're not here to stop you from doing it.
Absolutely.
That, that's not the point, the point is, and to your question, anything that comes in now is going to have to meet a, a higher standard than, uh, Orshuns wanted to build outside of town, and the landowners said, brick-and-mortar, no tent buildings, so they moved inside the city limits to build the tent building they've got. So, uh, I guess we're just trying to stop that flow, and...
And stucco panels, is that, is that something that is, is okay? Because I think that is what Orshuns is built off of, is stucco panels, which are like a, a four-foot good you can buy that is stucco, that is like, one overlaps the other, overlaps the other, which is a, I think, a significantly more cost-effective option. I haven't looked into stucco at all to know what the front of that is, I can't imagine it being something that's going to make or break, um, me renting that property, um, but I, I guess that's a consideration, is if stucco panels are something that is allowed because it meets the stucco look, um, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that?
I think, I think that's up for consideration, I think if you bring samples in and, and, let us look at it.
Right.
And make a, a general consensus determination.
Okay.
But at this time, you don't know if you're just going to rent the whole building to one person, or break it up, put offices in there, or...
I'm, I'm really not sure what, it's just wide open right now, so I plan to take a picture of it, last time I took a picture of it, I had 20, 25 messages about renting the building in about a week, um, and I just took a picture of the outside of the building with no interior pictures, and put how many square footage I have. So the need for that type of square footage in Goddard, if you try and look, you know, for anything to rent in Goddard, just doesn't exist, so, if I can rent the whole building all at once, well, without having to divide it up or rent to multiple tenants, I'd rather only deal with one person. You know, I don't want to have to rent it out to 10 different people and babysit that and the parking and everything else, if I can rent it to one person that, you know, and I don't want it to upset my chiropractic business, that's been there for 10 years either, so I'm going to have a major consideration with whoever's going in there, that they don't have a lot of traffic during my business hours anyways, because right now, I have a, I have an open parking lot in front of me and it works well, I don't want to...
Yeah, depending on what goes in there, how many cars or additional cars there every day.
Right, yeah, I think, I think Main Street is definitely in need of some, some more parking, one way or the other, some more angled parking towards the post office or whatever, but that's all for, you know, future discussion, and, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate you.
Hey, Joe? Discussions, comments, questions?
My motion to approve the new classification of the identified building as a principal structure, with the east side of the building being wrapped according to the new design guidelines, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Joey, you're welcome to stay for the rest, or if not, have a good night.
No, thank you guys, appreciate you.
Thank you. Item I, this is a staff report, so, as you're probably all aware, Goddard is growing at a pretty exponential rate, um, these are some numbers that we've brought together and mapped out, so you can kind of see the layout of it, but it is color-coded based on, um, different subdivisions, but, um, Elk Ridge, um, right now, Elk Ridge has had about three lots left, but they actually just sold, so Elk Ridge is, is, no more lots for sale in Elk Ridge. St. Andrews is at maximum capacity at 347, who believes? All right, you don't go blind, 347 St. Andrews, nerd, done too, so fourth, fourth edition of St. Andrews is completely packed out, no more lots for sale. Spring Hills completely packed out at 176, Seasons is 345, no more lots for sale, uh, Autumn, Autumn Blaze and Upper Edition is completely packed out, 131, no more lots for sale. Cloverleaf, uh, Phase 1 is completely done, all 50 lots are sold, um, Phase 2 is underway, six lots have already sold, and I got two building permits about three days ago, so last week, so nine lots have sold. Uh, each consecutive phase of Cloverleaf gets smaller, so we had 50, then I think it goes down to 200. down to about 45 or 40, and then it goes down to about 22, so it's packing out really quickly. Um, Harbor Creek has got a maximum of 245 lots, 41 have sold, and there's about 204 left that are available. All in all, of the, the aggregate, we have only about 25% of our residential development available to be built, 75% is filled. Rusty Creek is still going through most of the development, pre-development portion of it for grading and stormwater. Uh, they haven't opened it up for any building permits yet either. There's nothing, it's 106 lots total, uh, 105, excuse me, lots total. So we are looking at another potential development. Um, if you've been watching the City Council meetings, um, we're in talks right now about potential development over here. It's about 88 acres and 200-plus lots. Um, but by, by and large, uh, Goddard is growing, like I said, at such an exponential rate, um, we're starting to attract more commercial growth, which is good, um, but we're going to start looking at where we can grow, residentially speaking, including annexations. As you can see, this one's outside city limits, so we would have to annex them, um, and take into account rural water district as well. So a lot of different factors, but, um, consistent building permits and consistent residential growth. Obviously, we have a great school district that's driving a lot of it. Uh, being in one of the best school districts is certainly a key factor, uh, being on a major corridor, US 54400, and being obviously abutting Wichita, which is a huge job sector, um, is, is pushing a lot of that growth into the surrounding suburbs, and Goddard is no exception, so we're seeing a lot of that as well. That basically runs up my city planner report. Moving on to Jay's Planning Commissioner comments.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Well, we need to walk away with a kill. I bring that up every morning.
Well, we need to do signs on the water store too, but...
Right.
Do you have base on the, the...
Yes, yes, so, um, Phase, obviously, the Planning Commission approved the site plan amendment for Phase 2, which was those softball diamonds. They went from baseball to softball. I believe they started grading on that, and, uh, they're starting to move dirt for that phase of development. There's a lot of talks right now about what Phase 3 would look like. Um, a lot of it's just conceptual, um, what kind of amenities could be accommodated in Goddard, you know, what kind of restaurants or anything else that could be proposed. All of those would have to come with consecutive site plan changes because they weren't originally anticipated. It's just, what we're seeing is that the baseball diamonds are exceeding expectation. Um, obviously, they were bonded. We had bonds taken out, loans taken out to cover those, some of those payments, and they're getting paid off faster than we thought. Um, we're drawn in a lot of sales taxes from different states, including Texas and, um, as far off as Colorado, which is not that far off actually, but Colorado, Montana, we're seeing a lot of people coming in for the baseball diamonds, and, um, and so the development's doing very well. So talks are happening internally about what kind of new amenities can be proposed on those areas, and all of those new amenities, once the developer has actually got something down on paper and the architect's able to conceptualize it, then we would ask for an amended site plan to see what that would look like, but they're moving forward with the baseball diamonds. Um, the hotel is projected to be open in March. Uh, we're going to do a preliminary walkthrough in February, just to kind of see the general layout, but we're projected to be open in March. Um, the Genesis and the rest of that development, the Genesis and the Natatorium and everything else was slated for July. We're not sure if we're going to hit that or not, but, um, weather permitting and everything else that goes with that, labor shortages, and as well as, uh, supply chain for material shortage, um, disruptions have caused some certain issues to occur, but, um, by and far, by and large, we're hopefully going to see something open next year for the Genesis, if not maybe the beginning of 2023, so, but we'll keep you up to date on that. Hope that answers that question.
Guess I'll make sure to see what color the till ends up.
Not a green.
Well, it's different.
What is the facade on that building?
Uh, well, the original concept plan made it look very similar to the one off of 29th and Mays, if you've been, seen, have seen that one. It's generally, I mean, the Hampton is under the Hilton. They have very strict design guidelines, such and such amount of building space, amount of, you know, rooms available, the entryway, everything's, is pretty cookie cutter, so the color, the final color's got to match and approve whatever the Hilton accepts, which is basically what any other Hampton looks like across the nation for the most part in terms of color coding. Um, I can always find out, and I'll send it out, but, uh, the concept plan that was submitted made it look very, very similar to the one off of 29th, if you've seen that one, so we should be shooting in that direction. If something dramatically different happens, I suppose we could bring that up, but that's what we're, should look very similar to the one off of 29th, so.
Done?
Done.
Done?
Done.
Me too. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion. We can... All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.